I would like to call the October second, twenty twenty-three Wall City Council meeting to order. Uh, would you please read the rope, Carolyn?
Welsh?
Here.
Morgan? Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hawk?
Here.
Mike Anderson? We do have a plan.
Okay. Let's stand the same pledge of allegiance. Eric, did you read that post today?
Yes, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an order of business or emergencies, Carolyn?
No, we don't.
And do we have attendance on Zoom?
Uh, we have Katie attending on Zoom for minutes.
Okay. And, uh, I'd like to approve the agenda with this request to move the Public Works Report to right after item number ten on the agenda. So move it from number eighteen to right after number ten. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, so Rick has moved.
It's fine.
Stan? Stan, Stan moved. Kelly was seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We would like to welcome Deputy Cordell to the podium to give our police report today.
Good evening. Uh, I was told to come, uh, right as I started doing it, so, uh, we don't really have anything noticeable that I can see on here. Um, or anything that our lieutenant or sergeant wanted us to point out specifically. So more or less, you guys have any questions about any of the numbers on here?
Well, first of all, we understand you have a new sergeant.
Yes. And did you, you guys got to meet her last week, correct?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
Yep.
We had our, our happy but sad retirement for Sergeant Hawkins, but she was there.
Yep.
And we kind of actually threw her curve that this was one of the things that needed to be done for the, um, for our meeting and that it was Monday night. We forgot to mention that. So it's all good. So does anyone have any questions with that being said then, in terms of anything for the law enforcement this evening? If not, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said then, uh, do we have anyone, uh, to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none, uh, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Okay, Dan has moved.
Aye.
And Stan has seconded. Uh, any, uh, and this agenda can, uh, includes amended August third minutes, minutes of September twenty-first, the expense report, as well as the review of the on-schedule call, employee overtime sick and vacation report, golf course water usage, sales tax, and review of a building permit for Myron Williams to replace roof material at three oh four Kelly Avenue.
Um, I don't think we can approve this with the amended August third, because, um, set, uh, Attorney Trask didn't agree with that. So can we take that out? The amended August third city council minutes? Um, because that was not approved by her.
According to, uh, the motion that was made that night, uh, the motion was that she was gonna read and the amended minutes would reflect her corrections, which they were, and send them to her for her review, but not revision. That was what the specific motion read. And so that's what was accomplished.
But she, she said it wasn't acceptable because it wasn't, wasn't what she said. I think we worded it wrong. We knew what was supposed to be said.
Did you guys have any question on how it was amended? Because you guys received the copy as well. Did you not think it reflected what her comments were, or?
You know, I, I honestly, I hope not, but in her email, she also indicated that she was going to send something different, didn't she? And I don't, we didn't receive that. But I would assume if she has, still wants to make issue with it, that it can be part of a, it can get brought up again. Not saying that it'll be changed, but it could be so noted, I presume, that we, uh, reflect what her about, I presume, I think.
I guess I don't know why not, but, you know, basically, you know, I guess I just questioned, you guys were in that meeting. Did you guys not agree with how it was presented? I, that would be my question, you know? You guys are ultimately the council to make approval of that, so.
Well, I don't know what her disagreements are at this point, so I.
Okay.
But I would, if she had sent something that indicated that she was, that something else should be so noted, I understand that we possibly can't make changes to the minutes. That's what we discovered that that was a mean, can't be brought life and the public record.
Because the way that it was amended, I did reach out to an attorney through South Dakota municipal league, which we are allowed to do because we pay dues. So we have access to them. And so in that conversation, the attorney asked me to send the eight-three agenda, the eight-three original minutes, and the eight-twenty-one minutes, and after that, she recommended, do not change any original minutes, but to clearly label at the top of a duplicate as amended, and use asterisks and quote verbatim the motion and meeting it was related to in order to avoid appearance of a cover-up or inappropriate action. And so the motion specifically was that the minutes from August third meeting be read and amended to reflect Stephanie Trask's corrections and send to her for her review. And that motion carried, and that's exactly what we did. So the amended motion was based on legal suggestion on how you handle that. And she remarked that it is very extraordinary that you ever go back three or four meetings and revise those minutes. That is what the purpose of every meeting we have, first thing is the minutes of the last meeting, and that's where you address revisions or edits. So this was extraordinary to do, but because of that particular motion, we were obligated to address it, and that's how it was suggested, and that's how Carolyn completed those amended.
That's fine. That's okay. I, if you remember, I did bring up that, not in the same context of, as Attorney Trask, but I did say that I thought that was an interesting paragraph that, at the time, the next meeting, but whatever, you went to the attorney.
Okay, so with that, we've had a motion and a second. You're reflecting that, right, Carolyn?
Yes.
And so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that moves us to the, um, expense, I mean, the city of Wall Fire Department library claims that you have in your packet also, so those are in front of you and you would have received those. Is there any comments on any of the cities? Uh, claims, or the fire department? Or the library? Claims? If not, um, I would ask for a motion to approve city of Wall Fire Department and Library claims. So Kelly has moved.
Aye.
Okay, Stan moved, I was seconded. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so, Public Works, Garrett, could you?
All happened, we've been burning pretty hard cleaning up the ditches in town, the drainage ditches. Today, we bring out a bunch of trees that were on the backside of the campground. And around, it's been slowing the water down and catching debris and, and stuff like that, so. And we did clean sewers. We still have a few more to work.
Done with the sewers already?
No, we still have to do, yeah. The, for some reason, I don't know what it is, but like, the sewer machine works really good when you use it for like a few days and then it starts, like, it starts hammering, I don't know. Like a pump does, but then if you let it sit, it works again, so we'll probably start putting in next week.
And let it dust a few days.
Yeah.
Got a lot of rest a few days.
Yeah, you know, once it gets cold, so. And other than that?
Yeah, I did go look at what you'd done, um, and I drove both sides of, um, the back there by the railroad tracks, and then I asked permission from Dustin to go through on his side, you know, to look at what's going on there. He's very tickled that you guys are doing that. He is tickled about uh, some of the tidying up that's going on on the other side of his property line. He's thrilled with that. And, uh, so yeah, you guys are moving a lot of branches and dirt, so.
Yeah, we'll go back, we seen that dirt was setting, we'll come back and pile all that up. I did make the little, where the water comes under the street from the Dakota Mill and it turns a corner, if it's, you get a bunch of water, it goes straight into the campground, so. And what, you saw some of that dirt, it kind of burned up, so it wouldn't go in there, so.
Keep it moving in arder, on hard stuff, not, not the campground.
So we'll see.
Okay, no, it's looking good. You, you guys have been hustling hard for sure, so. Does anyone have any other questions of Garrett today, or?
Nope.
Okay, so, he's a football coach and he also is part of the fire department.
Get out of.
And, uh, the senior, or the student council did call me today and, and ask if it was okay if the fire department came for their bonfire, so I think somebody that's with the fire department should also be there.
Okay.
And so if you'd like to be excused, that would be.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Garrett.
And keep everybody safe. Uh, homecoming is an exciting time.
We'll try.
In more ways than one. Okay, good job. Thank you, sir.
See you there.
Okay, moving on to public comments then. Trevor, you wanted to share some thoughts with us.
Oh, I, when I came last year, talked to you guys, I told you I'd keep you updated. Uh, I've not done that very well. It's been about a year, so. Uh, I, I chose tonight because we just did our recruitment, the new year, um, scouting is a year long. We had a couple of kids that didn't stick with it, and a couple of kids decided not to do it this year, but we also got four new kids this year.
Awesome.
We're up to eight kids right now, uh, three boys and five girls, because BSA is a co-ed. And I have one of the oldest ones in the fifth grade, so next year it will be going on to Boy Scouts. Uh, and then hopefully we can get the troop started. Um, for now, I'll probably just do the Lone Eagle program so you can still be in the program, and I will, I told his parent himself that I would do as much as I could help out. Uh, wrote things down, because I'm not really good at public meetings. Uh, the PAC will recharter in December. That'll be for our sponsor, the Legion, and those of us who registered last year. And, uh, the National Council has changed things, so prices aren't prorated anymore. Once you charter or when a kid or adult joins, then they have one year from their signing. Uh, so it looks like from now on, our PAC will recharter about December of the year. Um, I did some, I put together some numbers, kind of figured out, because what I want to do for the kids is we can pay for their first year, and then with fundraising and whatnot, uh, hopefully the PAC can pay for them to come back. So thanks for sticking in, thanks for helping out. We got you covered. Plus, they'll be helping out with the fundraising, and so I might try and keep track of who helps out with what, and I'll go towards their dues the next year. So of course, rates are going up. I think I figured for the scouts that we have, plus one for budgeting purposes, the adults we have, plus one, and we, we don't have to, but we chose to pay for our sponsors to be. It comes in a little under fifteen hundred dollars, so I'm gonna put our, um, I'm gonna put our goal at two thousand. Hopefully we can get over that. And in the BSA, everybody preaches about popcorn and things. This is how you pay your dues. This is how you do things. Doesn't sell very well around here, and I get it, it's pretty expensive for a little bag. Uh, so we're gonna try and do things more local. Uh, we're gonna try and do our own fundraisers, and we're gonna try and get in on the November fourth at the craft fair. We're gonna try and get the kids to make some stuff to sell. And I think with Derby, that's coming up in, oh, February, March-ish. I don't remember exactly. We do it the winter ones because it's an inside thing. Um, so what I'm hoping to do this year, um, another reason I'm coming tonight to get some publicity, I'd like to try and get into some of the businesses around town, and, uh, what I'd like to do is first we'll have the scouts race their cars. I'd like to get some local businesses to make a car to race as well, and then we'll compete the businesses or just anybody that wants to do it. And what I, what I'm planning on doing is I'm gonna take one of my old Soapbox Derby trophies from when I was a kid. I got great big ones. And I'll kind of modify it. I'm gonna try and hopefully make like a traveling trophy. So every year, whichever business wins, we can place their car on it. They can place it in their place of business, and maybe, maybe it'll be a fun sport between the community and it'll be a little bit of a fundraiser for us, you know?
Awesome.
Make just a couple of dollars off of it, not much, but it, it's mostly for the fun of it. So that's not a big fundraiser, but it's something I'd like to do to try and help bring the community in, get the PAC and the community together. So, um, I think this year we decided to do our Camp Food Drive in the fall. I was told that'd be a better time to do it, so coming up in the fall, I hear we'll be doing that.
Do you have a date for that? Not yet.
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
So I'm thinking probably close to Thanksgiving-ish. I think that's probably a good target for a food drive. And thought maybe we could, maybe kind of help with, uh, help with getting a word out there. Maybe we can partner up with another business and do like a competition, y'all. Can, can Wal Drug got any more food cans than we can, or?
We can.
I'm sure, probably. No, I can't come the door. I need to stand a corner. Don't hold me to that.
Fuck.
Hot dog, my.
Tom and Tom, I gotta put it on tape.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But, you know, I, I was thinking while you're talking, talking about, you know, my dad raced a soapbox when he was a little boy. Him and Lionel Jensen built it, and we, I still have the picture of my, this is their. Anyway, uh, but I, I didn't think, I know, I don't know if we're gonna race a, uh, would race a car boot, but we should make a donation to the, because I think it's wonderful, uh, uh, what you're doing, and it's an opportunity for young people. I, I know when I was growing up, I was in Cub Scouts, and I was in Boy Scouts, made it up to Tenderfoot. I think that's the lowest, right?
Not, not quite, but not quite. I think it's like maybe the second.
But it's way away from even, anyway, but, but, yeah.
Certainly, you have a young man there that would love art, lady, that would love to do a car, to race. You just put it out there. Well, you never know. You never know, never know.
I haven't, like I said, I haven't come up with, uh, how exactly we're gonna do it. I probably won't do like entry fees to start with. It'll be more like your entry fee would be, I, I don't know how much they cost now, and prices are always changing, but the pine wood derby is, I think like seven bucks for the kit. And then it comes with instructions, you know, how big it can be, what it can and can't have on it, and how much it has to weigh. And so that's easy enough to follow the instructions. So what I'd pretty much say is for, for ten dollars, we'll buy you a deal. It'll cost sevens, we get three bucks there. And then we'll buy it for you guys. Make it, come race it. Or for fifteen bucks, we'll buy it, and one of the kids will volunteer and make it for you. Something like that is a little extra.
Yeah.
Of course, I don't want to get too crazy with that, because I only have eight kids. I can make five cars.
So it's a kit. You don't have to come up with, I was thinking, oh my God, I don't know how to make a car.
It, it's, it's a, a pine wood block and about that big rectangle block, and it already has the grooves cut in it for the wheel axles, which are just nails, that go into a little slot. And just as long as it's no longer than the original block, and I really can't remember how much it has to weigh, like one or seven ounces or something like that. You know, so everybody wants to play with, you put the weight in the front of it, you put the weight in the back of it. And when we put the track out last year, it goes from about the stage about three, maybe half to three quarters way across the gym, so I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty good track. So. But it was, it was pretty, I brought my old trophy. Last year I brought my old trophy in for the kids to, I gave that to the winner. I just tore a little black off it from nineteen ninety, whatever.
Cool.
But, and like I said, I have tons of my soapbox trophies, and I'm gonna use those. I'm just gonna recycle them by giving them to the kids for their trophies.
Awesome.
I'll pick the biggest ones, but use that for the traveling trophy.
Perfect.
So, uh, yeah, so I guess for, to raise money, I guess we're gonna try and do as many local fundraising as we can and do, you know, free will donation every, whenever we can. So I can't technically, I, when we started out, I asked for some money, and I talked to some other businesses and asked for money to kind of help us get started. It was kosher then, but now that we're a PAC, I can't actually go ask people for money. But I can, you know, we can, any event you guys come to or anything like that, we'll always open a free will donations, anything that helps.
Not long ago, someone asked me, uh, about helping them with like, um, concession stands or something. Would you ever be open to something like that, if?
Yeah, um, we've, I've talked to the parents about doing concession stands. I've heard that it's very, uh, lucrative.
It is.
Um, the hardest part is the last two opportunities that we had, it was like last minute, because I haven't actually got a chance to go and do like, let's pick one.
Right.
But, um, I'm starting to get some adult in, involvement, so now, you know, so I can get them to kind of help me, help me, help you, help your kids.
Right.
Um, and then that's one thing that we have on our list.
Okay.
For fundraising, so.
I just want to get your permission before I put your name out there.
Yeah.
So you were.
Yeah, it's, like I said, the last couple of times, it's just been last minute. Everybody's, well, my kids are playing at the event.
Yeah.
We're out of town.
Right.
I've, I've also been told maybe one, at least two, maybe three adults.
Yes.
Pretty curious, so.
Yeah, moms are important there, or dads, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. It's good. Got some good ideas.
Yes.
Well, thank you guys for your support. Thanks for supporting the local youth in our new year program.
Absolutely. Thanks, Trevor, for being a leader. Speaks well of our Public Works Department, for sure. Okay, with that, uh, you have a building permit in front of you, submitted by Annie Posley, the agent on, um, on their building.
There.
Uh, yeah, over here on north of the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, on the back of it, I mentioned.
Exactly. There's a, a drawing on the back. It appears it is on the, on the back side, not beside it.
No, in the, what's now, it says the parking in the back.
So where's it gonna be, this drawing? It's the old flower shop building.
Yeah.
Jan's old building.
I mean, east, east, yeah, the, on the east, towards the alley.
Oh, towards the alley, just extend with.
Yeah, extend there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Man, I assume somebody's looked at it and we know it's gonna be done. We present a commercial property.
It is, yeah. The builder, of course, is a
Right.
construction person.
Well, no. Is this, is this where the old, uh, where the flower shop used to be? That, don't they, didn't it used to be like a game?
Yes.
Right. Hunting Labs Center. Okay, okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So since it's commercial, I'm not, I know he's a contractor, and I, I'm sure he's gonna do a great, but no. Don't we always require additional? Definitely.
Um, like the.
Like a blueprint?
Well, that the design be site, the design be signed off by a contractor.
Right.
So, um, I can sure ask for them.
But I, I don't have any problem with approving that subject, and kind of doing that, so, yeah, otherwise, next week, next time, I don't know.
So you want to table this for now?
No, I, I, I'm good with approving that subject, too.
But ask them to submit the.
Something more, yeah, more detailed, for, for the main thing, Dan.
Yeah.
I don't think so. And I mean, I know, yeah, I know he's a contractor and, but just so we don't set a precedent, right or not.
Okay, so looking at the building permit, because it's over a thousand dollars, they need to provide a site plan, parking plan, building plan, and signage. And it should be drawn to scale, and they are required to comply with thirty-six eighteen A. The permit, uh, should be to the finance office forty hours prior to the city council. So Stan, am I hearing your motion is to?
Approve it kind of subject to there, then we get their plans following the rules.
Okay, is there a?
So not to hold them up.
Okay. Motion to approve subject to providing us with the requirement as noted on the building permit. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then, that brings us to Cindy Newsom. And her, uh, she is now going to recite her house, replace the gutters, and build the fence that she was, that she provided plans for last time, and if you look on the backside, she's showing where the fence is going to be. And picture of her house and showing that it's gonna be recited and replace the gutters. Any resident, it's a residential building permit.
I'm, excuse me, I moved to approve this.
Kelly moved to approve the residential building permit submitted by Cindy Newsom. Dan has seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? May permit is approved. All right, that moves us to item number thirteen, which is the health pool of South Dakota. Carolyn, do you have more information about this that you'd like to share?
Well, every year around this time, we get the updates of what the twenty twenty-four rates will be. And so I provided you with the rate increases and let you know that, you know, we have two that are on, two employees under the single policy, two under the employee plus, plus children, and two under the family policy, so you can see what that might look like. What that might look like.
I thought you meant it was going up, times two was like.
Oh, sorry. No, just two.
Okay, so like everyone else's in health insurance. You two are, this also is going up, any other comments, do you need any approval?
I do need to, because.
Carolyn, I I'm curious, what's the percent increase?
I think it said.
Three to five. Or. Eight point five.
Yeah, up at the second paragraph, it says. Twenty twenty four.
Perfect, thank you. In this day and age, that's doing pretty good. Cause insurances.
But yeah, I do need a motion because um basically I sign off saying that it was approved at whatever council meeting.
I'd move to approve.
Okay. Rick has moved to approve the increase. Uh for the health pool of South Dakota insurance, that are second. Secondly, seconded, any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us now to item fourteen, Stan and Rick. Um met with Carolyn and I regarding the budget, Stan, would you like to? Visit with us about?
Uh yeah. And I think everybody has got, you know, I'm sure Dan is, Kelly. Read through it, understand it all, so. Anyway, we did meet and we we did talk about having a first reading tonight and after visiting with Carolyn this afternoon, we're. It needs a little more fine tuning and there's gonna be several changes, so. Thought maybe it'd be best that we just uh delay it until the next, which would be the October nineteenth meeting, I believe. There are a few things, like we do have the Fourth Avenue is in there, we don't know what the. Uh so that is gonna be and we will not know that, we probably aren't gonna know that till. After the budget is totally approved, but the financing portion we are getting, or we think we are getting. Rural development money to electric, electric at zero percent interest rate. Not for the maximum amount, but there's other monies available that we think we can get for. Pretty low interest, but that's yet to be determined, uh that we hope we would know by uh next meeting. As far as other. Normal increases, the ambulance, of course, is gonna get, have to be moved up considerably. Although maybe not as much as they originally anticipated. And we, we know that information by the next, by October or not.
As far as.
What the ambulance will be getting.
Where they know.
District.
Are gonna get what they thought.
They should know that.
So we we will know that.
Can't guarantee, because they have made some changes since I was submitting that to them, but.
And then um just as, because the budget, because of the constraints of the budget, Newnac Valley and Hanson. Subdivision and Fourth Avenue and Airport, uh. We we will not. Put up, uh put in two hundred thousand or two hundred fifty or any, any routine maintenance, uh other than, I guess, as needed it, uh when we go through the year. And I guess other than that, uh it'd just be good if you look through it and if you have any questions, technical questions, ask Carolyn. Hopefully we'll have uh. Have it so that we can approve the first reading in October and second reading in. November.
And we are ahead of ourselves, um we have changed. Our budget timeline by ordinance that we had to have the first reading in November. Where prior, it was always due the first reading in September, but. By ordinance, we changed that, so. You know, even if something comes up or we don't get it approved until the first reading in November, we're still gonna get it. Of official and in the paper published and all that by the timeline, but. I'll be honest with you, if we can get it done early, I just.
So then I presume we don't need to do, make any motions tonight.
No.
Okay. Any questions then or concerns? Uh Carolyn did a marvelous job in getting this prepared for the committee, for sure. And. Um just as a point of information. We've already always had like a three or four million dollar cash balance. But we are not gonna be in that kind of a cash balance this year because of this. But we are doing the things that it takes to make infrastructure happen and it's just catching us. All at once, and so we're just gonna have to be very conservative moving forward and stick to our budget and. We'll be okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 we can get, yeah, for sure.
The ones that are highlighted, is that, what is?
Um they were for different reasons, um.
Okay.
Kinda wanted to point out like what portions of the Fourth Avenue project, which areas that that money would come from.
Okay.
And things like that, just. They kinda helped me when we were going through the process to remember.
Oh.
Explain those things.
Okay, I thought you were like, pay attention to this.
Yeah.
Okay.
But at any point in time, any of you guys that aren't on the finance committee. Wanna come in and have me kinda go through and explain things better, I sure, I'm always willing to do that, so. I'm kinda geeky, I. It helps, you know, if you can have it told to you several times, it it really does help you understand it. I don't mind the questions.
Okay, anything else on budget? So thank you Stan and Rick for working on that and getting us to that point. Okay, item fifteen is a contract with the state for F. A A. Aviation update for the G I S. System, Carolyn, tell us about what's going on here.
So back in April, I believe that was um. As part of the finish up of this runway project that we have going is. The FAA needs to update the G I S system for, which. I'm assuming has to do with the flight pattern or something coming in, because it might be just a little bit different, so. Not like I know a lot about, but um and so. We did get a grant for that approved. Through the FAA, which is that ninety percent again. Back in the spring, but now this is the state portion of that. Five percent that they'll put in and we will cover the other five percent of that cost. So this won't happen um until. Probably in. He said towards that end or. Middle of the twenty twenty four year, but. They've gotta send somebody out to do all their, whatever they do to get that G I S system.
But it should kinda be noted, and the engineer brought that up last. Meeting, but we will be spending. For some money, almost every year for the next three or four years, some, but it'll still be at the five percent level, but the one years, I mean, it's gonna be. Not limited amongst this amount, so. But that's just part of the master plan.
So we do need a motion to approve this contract.
Part is submitting the paperwork, I need ten minutes from the meeting boards.
Okay, Stan has moved to approve the. Uh South Dakota Department of Transportation contract. Uh regarding the Waukegan Municipal Airport. Agreement for. What shall we call this?
Well, they reference everything based on that project number.
Oh, good idea, project number. That's listed on the agenda, contract to update the G I S system. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan is seconded, any other questions or discussion or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion. All right. So that brings us to um. The mayor report, as you directed, I did uh respond to uh Mr. Hague regarding that. We would accept his gesture of one thousand dollar credit towards future le- uh legal fees. And I also indicated as uh recommended by. Uh legal advice that we have it reflected in the minutes, that the legal fee rate. Uh paid to Kent Hague of Hague and Hague L L P, going forward would be three hundred and fifty dollars per mo- per hour. May I have a motion to that effect? Dan is moved.
Second.
And Rick has seconded, any comments, questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. And Carolyn, please be sure that that gets reflected in the minutes.
Yes.
Of this meeting. Okay, uh. Talked about the student council. Okay, the other part of the conversation, when I reached out to seek the correct way to amend. Minutes. The attorney said. You have a much bigger problem, they're trying to amend these minutes. Because within those minutes of that particular meeting. Was also made a motion to as the first reading of the. The, to approve a first reading to ratify the current zoning ordinance. As is, and that was seconded by Mike Anderson. And it was carried with margin abstaining. However. That item. She brought to my attention was not on the agenda, because she'd asked me to send that to her. And therefore you cannot make a motion. Uh it is not appropriate. So. We. We have some options, we can leave it just exactly as it is. But we will be. Open to. And we'll be totally vulnerable.
Mary, Mary, what meeting was that?
It's the August third meeting. And it happened inside of the finance officer report. And that report has started out talking about. The. Uh how the planning and zoning was scheduled. For a meeting uh at the end of the month. And what the process was gonna be. So um. That motion was made and it was passed. As she said, you're vulnerable, any attorney can spot that. And. So we can just leave it as it is and. And walk away, or the other suggestion she said, since we do have. A planning and zoning commission that is meeting already on October sixteen, take it back to planning and zoning. And visit with the consultant. And ask the best way in their thoughts on. Moving forward.
I'd recommend we leave it like it is and take it to planning and zoning and. In the meantime.
Right, we actually can take no action tonight at all, nothing.
Yeah, and and I.
This information.
And I, and I think when we took action. On that, it was on the agenda.
No, it was not.
I disagree.
I have a copy of August third agenda, I believe in my stuff somewhere. But it was not. On the agenda that night. And that's how she picked that out so quick. Like three minutes. She noticed that. So. I can, I can go through all my stuff and I know I can locate it, but I just don't have it in my fingertips. But we can't take an action, this is information only. And um. So just wanted you to be aware of that. Information.
That was the. Meeting that. You wanted it on there, Rick, and then you were two hours. Too late.
Yeah, but it wa- it wasn't, it wasn't on uh Carolyn's.
Yeah.
So it it was there. Yeah.
No, it wasn't on Carolyn's agenda.
Review of comp plan and schedule for starting. And schedule for starting zoning ordinance process. What it says.
That was her report. That was her friend.
No, and and that was, that was the meeting that I tried to get it on the agenda. And then Mary canceled it.
Yeah.
Which, you know. It should have been on the agenda. But I I think we're covered with it being uh in Carolyn's section and and I.
Okay, please look at number fourteen on our agenda tonight. If that was gonna be a first reading of that zoning ordinance, that's how it should have read. First reading of the ordinance. Of the. That's how it should reflect, and that's how she found there was no such. Um item on that August third agenda. Okay, another. Item that, just for information also. Because one of the things that was brought to our attention was a concern about, I think it was referred to as a story format. I wanna share with you two uh minutes. That's a minutes from. Twenty twenty one and. In September and October. And this was with a different staff member that. Was taken in the minute of the meeting, a different attorney that was reviewing the final. Um minutes before they are sent forward to the council for approval. The written notes that are on the. September twentieth, twenty one, twenty twenty one minutes. I became intrigued when I read these minutes, when I became uh mayor, because I was trying to get. Caught up and do my homework on what was going on, I came in, listened to the audio tape, because that's what was available. And these were the things that were, that I heard on the audio that weren't mentioned in the minutes. But you will see that both attorneys are uh quoted, the mayor is quoted, so it's just. Uh item of interest. Okay, with that, I would like to move on to the finance officer report.
I'm gonna make a comment on that, but this was a court reporter that did it, the one on.
No, not, no.
Well.
She was there taking minutes for. For transcript.
Yeah. But. Man, I'm not gonna get into quite what you learn, okay?
Okay, so moving forward, the finance officer report, please.
I just wanted to remind you at this time that um. I'll be here tomorrow through the end of the day, and then I will be out the rest of the week attending the. Conference for the South Dakota Municipal League and um.
Where's that?
It's in Rapid.
Oh, I thought you.
So we have. Like tomorrow night.
Yeah.
When I get off work, I have to go up there for a meeting for the board and. We start early and. Events going on. So I just usually just stay up there, even though it's not that far away. Um and then also to remind you that next Monday, a week from today, will be a holiday, so the office will be closed, that's. Columbus or Native American Day, whatever, what you wanna call it.
Okay.
And then um. We, in reviewing um timeline for the budget and stuff, of the finance committee. It was kinda discussed of maybe needing to make some changes to the November meetings. Uh for the reason that. Uh at last meeting, you guys approved me being out attending that. National League of Cities Conference in November, which would be the week of one of our council meetings. But. I would probably ask for a change on that anyway, because it would be the sixteenth, and that seems so early to get all the bills in even. And then we have to wait two weeks. And then we have to wait two weeks and so it's just sixteenth is really early to finish the last meeting of the month. So I have my proposal, since I'm gonna be out, is gonna be the twenty first. And looking at that, we um suggested maybe going then with the ninth. Uh for the first meeting in November and then that way they wouldn't seem so far apart. Uh we kind of be in a closer timeline. So does anybody have a conflict? With changing the November meetings to the ninth and the twenty first?
Sounds good to me.
Me too.
Okay, with you, Dan.
That's a long words away.
Okay, so do you need a motion to approve those meeting changes?
I'd make a motion that we change the November city council meetings. In the first one being November ninth and the second one being Tuesday, November twenty first.
Is there a second? Dan has seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Mary, you voted.
I'm sorry, I I was.
Carolyn, please note that.
I was trying to coax somebody.
Okay, thank you for that, okay.
And that's all I have.
I will mention that uh the new mayor in Rapid City gave a great pitch for South Dakota Municipal League. On the uh five o'clock news. And was so excited about getting to meet other mayors from around the state and what a great opportunity this was for them to be so close. And all of his or a lot of his staff to be able to attend. So obviously, it's not such a convenient symbol league is. Very well respected, so we're glad you're a part of it and we understand you're gonna be in leadership here pretty soon. So that is awesome. Okay, next item of the agenda is items for discussion. No action will be taken. Do we have? Any such items tonight?
I do. I was visited tonight by someone and I'm so glad you're it's not here um. Glen Street and Fourth Avenue. There's a lot of people running the stop sign. It's it's another touristy town people just aren't paying attention and don't. Stop at the stop signs um. This person says that they sit out and watching about within an hour thirty people run the stop sign and he's worried about kids, which. Is a pro- problem, but and I'd like to tell them we're trying to work on it. We got all down Glen Street. But um it is wondering if we could get a four-way stop there. I I don't know um. I'm just bringing it up. We can discuss it. At length another time, but I'm just bringing it up that he stopped up just before the meeting.
Okay.
And and I don't know how how do you get, he set a bigger bigger stop sign. Well, we've got that. They don't stop there. The locals are the ones that are blowing through the stop signs um. I don't know how we can.
Glen Glen Street and Fourth Avenue?
Fourth Avenue, yeah.
I didn't know that was a problem.
Yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, he says every night he sits out on his patio and.
What's stop sign on Fourth Avenue?
It'd be right by Ten Shule.
Yeah, Madison McLaughlin's.
You know.
They don't stop when they're driving north. They don't.
Right.
Like he's saying, they don't stop.
And they don't um. I kind of have trouble. Following him, but coming down. Going from west to east. They think they're, if they go down to the dump, they're finding interstate and then they hurry back, it just. People are just.
See, a lot of old maps show that as still the old highway fourteen.
Really?
Yeah. If you Google, you know, that's all the trucks and everybody end up stuck down there because. Right, that shows that as a road to get around I ninety, so they can and then they get down there.
That that's not.
Just an old section line.
It's not passable, is it?
I mean, you have drives around through the ditch to get around the washout to. But so that's, I mean, that's an issue that I don't, and there's there's dead ends. Right there by Bill Chaney's. There's another one at the top of the hill. There's another one that says minimum maintenance. I mean, I don't know.
Uh yeah, what do you, what do you do?
Yeah, I mean, people just, they don't pay attention. Yeah, I've seen big motorhomes up there trying to turn around the trailer, even into the trailer court, pulling vehicles behind. Because they get there and then realize this is highway, is it the state road up there?
Well, right along that line of thinking, we've got some really big outfits parking on this. Where there's two sites to park. And they stick out so far. It's kind of tricky to get down that.
On Main Street.
On Main Street.
Yeah, oh gosh, yeah. The double dooies or the.
Yeah, um with the extended eight foot.
Yeah.
Four door cabin, eight foot.
With that thing on the end.
So I don't know what.
Yeah.
The street committee might wanna think about what's top ten ways to. And then here comes the tour bus, right? Down the middle with all those big outfits, it's like.
Yeah, the the. The four way uh. That intersection wouldn't work very good. Who knows, you've got such a short distance to where that corner goes north. On Creighton Road, you know, so if you got a semi sitting there, he's got the whole thing blocked there back to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thing just about.
Yeah, truck traffic.
Yeah, a lot of truck traffic on there. Yeah, no, there's just.
Well, thank you. Somebody comes up with a great idea. Right here, no.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next. Okay, next city council will be October nineteenth at six thirty P M. Uh with that being said, then we do have a need for executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty five dash two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Case been made in second and all those in favor.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, thanks Trevor for being here.
You guys.
Good job. Yeah, we'll call the executive session um. Back to order. Are there any uh motions that need to be uh made this evening? Yeah.
Make quickly that consents us to uh re- readdress the job descriptions at the November ninth meeting.
November ninth, I agree. I mean, I think that's good because it's plenty of time to review.
Hey, and you're good with that, Stan?
Yeah.
And Kelly's indicated that, so that's what we'll do is review the job description so that all members of the council. Will have an opportunity to review and ask questions. Is there any other business this evening? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Stan, smooth.
Second.
Dan the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned and we did it before eight o'clock. Good job.